You know, Kim will be here.
She's able to join late. She's working at the gym till six.
Oh, no, I think I'm freezing.
We we have five. We don't need two of me. Oh, Cassie, you're totally froze. Ella, oh, you're back. You can't hear anything. Maybe get out and come back.
Wait, are you talking to me?
No, no, to Cassie. You're fine. You're fine. Sorry. She's like, why not? I do. You're fine. Okay, I'm ready whenever everyone's ready. I think Cassie's still in. I've never seen someone join on a bike. Oh, you're walking? Nice.
About to be on a bike, leaving the gym right now.
Okay, be safe. Cassie said, just give her a second. She doesn't know her internet is wonky. We see you, Cassie. Can you hear us?
No, I mean, I don't know what's I was had no internet issues until like a minute ago. So, okay, if I disappear, I will call in. But so I will call us to order. It looks like we have forum. So calling our June regular meetings order is a four.
Okay, I know Kim's biking Bowman. I know she's here. Okay, okay, Creswell.
Here.
Kerr.
Here.
Land.
Here.
Manah Happenworth.
Here.
Ma here, Martin Sek.
Here.
Is Roberto.
I'm present.
Okay, Zen.
Here.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call Bowman.
Yay.
Creswell.
Yay.
Kerr. Land.
Yes.
Manah Happenworth.
Yes.
Ma, yes, Martin Sek.
Yes.
Menjivar.
Yes.
And Zen.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 31st, 2022 LSC special meeting. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call Bowman.
abstain.
Creswell.
Yes.
Kerr.
Yes.
Land.
Yes.
Manah Happenworth.
Yes.
Ma, yes, Martin Sek.
Yes.
Menjivar.
Yes.
Zen.
Yes.
Okay, those are approved and then hand it over to for public participation.
Thanks, and our first sign up, I don't believe wanted to speak in person. It's Maxwell Fritz. So I think that's just to be added to the record. Next up is Eric Levin. I see Eric there. Mr. Levin. You are muted, but you can go ahead when you unmute.
I I thought that I was, okay, here I am. You can hear me? Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. A year ago, my son just finished freshman year, so new family to the school. And a year ago, we read in the newspapers that Jones was one of the schools that gave up both of its SROs. This is I asked for some public comment time at my first meeting last year and asked why that decision had been made because I reviewed the survey data that was shared. And it appeared to me that looking at the surveys by parents, by students and faculty and staff that on every question, two thirds or more were either neutral or strongly agreed with, you know, the positive aspects of SROs. I got what I thought was a pretty muddled response from the person who tried to address it at the beginning of the school year. And I just wonder with everything that's gone on in our country and also reading that CPS is investing money into counseling resources. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for the next LSC to bring back SROs and also be able to provide the counseling through additional funds, hopefully coming through CPS, because at least my reading of the data suggested that there was more good than harm from the SROs. And obviously, this is a hot topic nationwide at the moment. So that's not a this question isn't really to any particular LSC member, but I like to hear from people who are in the know to help advise the incoming LSC of what the options may be, since my understanding was that if SROs were given up, that it would be very hard, if not impossible, to get them back once that decision was made on a school by school basis. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks. And I think Rachel, did you sign up? Next. And are you talking about the same issue?
I am, but I'm happy to wait.
Yeah, so if council members, if you have questions or comments now, that's fine. Roberto?
Yeah, I'd like to address Mr. Levine's comments here. So back in 2019, 2020, as you know, CPS was going through revi- reviewing the SRO program. And the council before us took a vote. And the vote at that time at the council had taken a vote to retain the SRO. It wasn't unanimous. I don't remember what the vote count was, but there were it was there were a number of council members who voted in favor of removing the SRO. Then CPS decided that they needed to take a systematic approach instead of just asking the LSCs to vote on whether they were going to retain and remove. And so they worked with Jaden Chow, who's with the Office of Safety and Security, to develop some sort of cohesive cohesive rubric, so to speak, for the LSC to make an informed decision. And they developed this system and they invited five community based organizations and they held several community, community events. They were all virtual due to the pandemic. I think a few of the council members attended. I attended many of them in which it was just reimagine security and school police officers in the school. Then we developed, based on that recommendation, we developed the whole school safety committee, which Rachel was involved, as well as Assistant Principal Eric Mitchell and our Student Representative Daniel Andrade and other folks from the community and from the school parents. And they developed a survey for both the teachers, staff, students and parents. And it was my understanding when I read the survey and based on the assessment this second time around, was that the recommendation was to either retain one SRO or remove both. And that was based on all, everything that CPS had created as far as like taken to these considerations. And what we did as a school and what the previous LSC was debating and the listening session that happened in July of 2020. So as a member, I took all of that. And I was listening to what the students, because mostly the students were saying, we do not need a police officer, Chicago Police Department, a police officer with the Chicago Police Department is part of the school community. And CPS at that time was trying to reimagine what a school could look like holistically. That would uplift all of our students and especially those students who have felt marginalized or in some way have been felt that having a police officer in the school would cause more harm, mental harm or social emotional harm to them. And in return, we would get some additional resources for the school, for the schools as far as like social emotional counseling, additional security guards, which the school has about eight or 10 security guards that maintain both in and outside of the 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 school, community, the school building. The other thing that I took into account is that the I think we're in the first district. The police station is about a mile away and response time was less than three minutes. And that area is always patrolled constantly. So for me, as a member, taking into what the previous council had done, what the students were saying during the listening session in July 2020, during the surveys and what the students want and what the teachers were sort of what the teachers were indicating. I took all of that account. And attending everything that CPS directives, the directives from CPS, from the district leaders that we needed to take a more holistic approach to whole school safety. So I voted in favor of removing both the SROs, both police officers. And I want to be clear here that I am not in any way suggesting or saying or implying or explicitly indirectly, directly saying that the police officers, any negative thing about our police officers in the Chicago.
In Chicago.
But I do not believe that we do need police officers in the school. The other thing that we did was, or the previous LSC, was to try to talk to other local school councils, see what they were doing. And we tried to balance those two things out. In one way, we decided to remove those SROs was one, bring in more counseling. Two, hire another one or two more security guards. Three, upgrade our cameras, both on the perimeter and inside the school. And I felt that that was a great compromise in respecting students' voices and respecting the teachers and taking a wide range of feedback from across the city and our school community. And Mr. Levine, you asked if there's a way to return the SROs. The answer is no. From CPS district leaders, the answer is no. Once the school has voted to remove their SROs, they will not be returning. So unless something changes with the district, the district policy, the next LSC will not have an opportunity to vote to bring back the SROs. That was a permanent decision.
That's, I would just say, as a parent, that's unbelievably frustrating, given the the mood of the country and Chicago in particular. And everything that you said, with all due respect, I wasn't at the listening session because I wasn't yet a Jones family member. But nothing that you said aligns with the survey data with over 1,000 people from what I could count submitting surveys, nothing that you said aligns with that, with all due respect. They were there. They were very supportive. The people who are neutral agree or strongly agree were always two thirds or better. So maybe there was a slim minority. And the idea of creating a safe space so a minority of people don't feel threatened by a uniformed police officer, in my opinion, as a parent, does not do a service to the school. And there could have been an opportunity for restorative justice or some other form to make, to help students feel more comfortable around police officers. But my son feels exposed not having the SRO. And I know a lot of other parents are there. And to hear that this LSC made an irreversible decision is incredibly disheartening. And I don't think I'm alone. So I'm going to sign off, but this is this is not a good outcome, in my view. And I hope that the LS, the incoming LSC will make an appeal to CPS to review that decision, especially since additional funds are theoretically coming to the school for the resources that this LSC reassigned elsewhere.
Any other council members? For a fact check on that, I don't believe that there's additional resources coming to the school for counselors. So I am not sure where you got that idea. We got additional funds specifically in exchange for removing two SRO positions. And those funds are proportional to that. And so there's not something beyond that that's planned. And Rachel, why don't you go ahead? Is this your public comment? I mean, it doesn't really matter.
Just a comment on CPS. So when we were having conversations with the Chief of Safety and Security, Jaden Chow, she said, the district is looking to remove the SRO program over the course of the next five or 10 years across the district. So that is something they're seriously considering. And that was even in the wake of various protests and threats to safety. So just something to keep in mind. It's something that we also considered. We're making our decision.
Thanks. Okay, so next. Rachel, you signed up to speak. Go ahead. And then Bill Chuslovsky, you will be after Rachel.
Okay, great. I will try to stay within two to three minutes. Hi, my name is Rachel Zen and I am an outgoing community rep. In 2021, I served as the Chair of the Health and Safety Committee. I'm also a pre-service high school English teacher and I'll graduate with my license next May. And so for this last meeting, I just want to share my thoughts on school safety at Jones as a pre-service teacher and as an outgoing LSC community rep. I shared this quote at the last meeting, but in light of recent events, I want to repeat it. Tamar Manasa, who is the founder of Mothers and Men Against Senseless Killing, which is a Chicago based nonviolence organization in Inglewood, says that, quote, violence is not a special event, end quote. So to put it less eloquently, violence is everywhere and it happens every day. And I'm not just talking about physical violence, structural, sexual, cultural and psychological violence all occur at Jones and other schools on a regular basis. And students have been documenting this harm for some time. If you're not aware, in the summer of 2020, Jones students created an Instagram page called Jones BiPOC, where alumni and current students shared over 250 allegations of abuse, racism and harassment that they said had taken place at their school. The perpetrators of these alleged actions were not just Jones students and alumni. They were Jones staff as well. Following the creation of this page, no accountability process was established. No plan for improving student safety was put into place. The harm that students exposed was not substantively addressed. Case in point, the Jones Student Handbook hasn't even been updated since 2019. For some Jones students, violence is not only in the school building itself, it's also online and in print. In March of 2021, racist, anti-Semitic and homophobic messages were sent to Jones students via unauthorized Discord server. And for those unfamiliar, Discord is a popular social messaging platform. It's kind of like Slack. And just this past month, anti-immigrant rhetoric was printed in the school yearbook as a student's senior quote. All of these examples are different forms of harm. These examples are not unique to Jones because harm is ubiquitous in schools and online today. But the solution to these complex problems is not school resource officers. It's also not armed teachers or even metal detectors. One small but crucial solution is actually councils like this one. Adults and students who are deeply invested in this public good, warts and all. To the parents, students and staff on this council, and for those who have given public comment, I want to say thank you for your commitment to discussing the hard questions about school safety, budget and accountability collectively. I think at the end of the day, as the author Zach Norris puts it, we keep us safe. Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel. Thank you from Lenny in the chat. Any other council member discussion? If not, we can move on to Bill. And am I pronouncing your last name right? Chuslovsky?
Yes, thank you. You say it better than my wife and she married me. So thank you. I'm Bill Chuslovsky. I'm a, I guess, prospective parent. Community member. I'm a former LSC member, not at Jones. So I respect you all volunteering. For the gentleman who spoke on SROs, the LSC member, I really respect how he owned his decision. Though I disagree personally with the decision, to me, the most important vote on SROs should come from the principal. If he or she wants it, that's what an LSC should do because they're given the job of running the school. And if they think it's important to have an SRO, then otherwise, I don't know why you hired them as principal. But that's, that is not why. So I really wanted to say that I respect the gentleman, how he owned his decision and explained it. I'm zooming in because as a parent of three CPS schools, I am appalled about the yearbook quote. But for a completely different reason than the current LSC chair expressed in a newspaper article. In short, whatever happened. Sorry, in short, whatever happened to fighting speech? Even or especially unfavorable speech with more speech? Not censorship. Let me ask this. What if the student had instead written for their quote, tear down the wall in the yearbook? Would that too have been offensive and worthy of censorship? If not, what is the principal distinction between the two, other than one political viewpoint is favored? And the other disfavored? Finally, given all the problems our schools have, this is the issue you choose to focus on? All said, the yearbook incident is a teachable moment. I agree. But we are using it to promote censorship, not tolerance, which is the wrong teaching. The kids should read and study the Salem witchcraft trials, read the book, The Scarlet Letter, study McCarthyanism, read Fahrenheit 451 and Kafka novels. Because sadly, they are not just works of fiction, but instead, as evidenced by this incident, we are living in similar times. So I think if it was my kid who put that quote in, which I would think would be a terrible quote, I'd say he's a senior. He gets to pick his quote. Like they say, one man's terrorist is another man's freedom fighter. What you consider offensive in a yearbook, I may consider your quote offensive. So unless you're going to get rid of all quotes and unless the goal is extreme censorship, don't censor seniors quotes, especially given the quote in question or whatever. So that's why I took the time to zoom in. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. And council members, feel free to comment now. We also have this on the agenda as an item, so you can save discussion for that as well. So but happy to have some comments now, too. Sarah?
I just would suggest that Bill raise that with the administration, who had put together the guidelines for the quotes. And I also, then I have separately have a comment to read from an English teacher. So just let me know when that's appropriate to read.
Just so you know, I read the guidelines and the guidelines are the problem. It says anything offensive, which means what you consider offensive or I consider offensive, may be censored. So it's one of these self fulfilling quote guidelines. It doesn't really, some of the guidelines were specific, like you can't swear. You can't mention someone else who hasn't consented. Some of those things, some of the guidelines were quote, good and directive. But the guideline we're talking about here, which caused the censorship of this quote, just fall under the generic category of things we think offensive.
I I I just to say that I think that that term is a dog whistle. And so therefore, I think it's offensive. That's my opinion. Thank you. I'll let Cassie.
Anything can be. I could think what you write is a dog whistle.
Okay.
It's a slippery slope, boys and girls. So be careful for what you.
Please do not call me boys and girls. Thank you. It's really, really offensive.
Let's focus on formal re-substance. That's great. On pronouns and things like that.
I'm chairing a meeting here. I'm going to call on the council member to respond to this. Alexandra, go ahead.
Just so that nothing gets, I guess, misinterpreted, I wanted to directly quote and state what is written as the guideline that be quote violated, which wasn't that nothing offensive, like in quotes can be put in. It was that it was nothing that generates another person's ethnicity, religious, political belief, sexuality, gender, physical or mental ability, et cetera. Which, I don't know, I consider that to be different than something that's just generally offensive. What that would be defined as is hate speech, which is not allowed in any professional capacity. So in a school where you're trying to raise competent individuals who can hold their, hold their own in a public, like in a public setting or hold their own as adults, it is important to teach people that can't use hate speech because you will not make it very far in life if you are being hateful towards other people. So I mean, it was a pretty straightforward guideline that didn't leave a lot of room for misinterpretation.
Again, I asked you all a question. If the quote had been tear down the wall, would that be okay? Because that's the opposite side of the same coin. And therefore, again, what you consider to be hate speech, one person's hate speech is another person's liberation. So you're making value judgments.
Thanks for giving your comment. We don't usually have public comment speakers then ask council members questions additionally after their turn. So Roberto, do you want to go ahead, please?
Yes. So as a father of a student who identifies as part of the Latinx community and as an immigrant son, the quote was hateful. It was hateful. It targeted the Hispanic Latinx community. And it's not okay. Hateful speech is not okay. I'm an advocate for freedom of speech. I agree that you combat speech with other speech, but when it comes to hate, that should not be tolerated. It should that should not be tolerated. It should not be accepted, and it should not be published in a book where other people don't have an opportunity to publish similar or, or, or speech that would counter that argument. That yearbook was published without any other student reviewing the quote and giving them an opportunity to respond. That yearbook is distributed. It clearly targeted the Latinx community. And students, the students and families that I've spoken to, they have feel that they have been harmed. They have feel that they were targeted in a very spiteful way. And so, we all understand how this goes and how what, what, just to paint the picture of this quote, and so that we all are on the same page of what each one of those lines means and the impact it has on me, my family, and the people that I know that represent the Latinx community. Right? Build that wall is hateful, unwelcoming message towards the Hispanic Latinx community. It just is. Right? Yes, we can, right? To continue the hate, right? Is being used in a negative manner towards the Hispanic Latinx community and denies their struggle and resilience. And it's being used to disrespect American civil rights activists and labor leader, Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta. They are the ones who came up with the slogan "Si se puede." It's a term that quote, is rooted in the struggle of the working-class Latinos and the agriculture workers. And it's their rallying cry for the people. Bob the Builder.
I think you cut out.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Thank you. Bob the Builder is a stereotype about the Latinx Hispanic community as immigrant day laborers and construction workers, and that is all there will be, that is all that they will ever be. Put those in context, and it becomes clear that it is targeted towards a group of people, and it is hateful. And that we should not, we should not perpetuate, we shouldn't. We can have, and this is not about political views, it's how those three sentences combined impact me, my family, and denies my existence. If folks wanted to write something, they could have used the Jones Blueprint that allows other people to write something that is counter to that argument. But it didn't happen here. And there were students whose quotes were censored, denied. I don't know what those quotes could have been. Maybe they were "tear down that wall", and it was denied. But we allowed this. So, I'm looking at it from a whole picture. And it's, it hurts a lot. I've been sitting with this since I learned about it. And the response from the administrative leadership team was to say there was an offensive that some people might find offensive, and we're going to continue to distribute this, without acknowledging what those three sentences, the impact those three sentences have. There is nothing in the email. There's no one here who can talk to us and address the community who have felt harm. So, it, it is, to me, to me personally, it's not about censoring free speech. It's about making sure that we're not perpetuating this hate. That, as you pointed out, Mr. Chavoski, is that we're in a time where it's easy just to forget that we're all one species on this planet. Right? We're all human beings. And we can have differences, we can have different views and perspective, but to continue to say certain terms or certain phrases is to alienate others and to harm those who have been oppressed and who have fought for their freedom, for, fought for, to their liberties. So, I just think that that quote should not have been allowed. And then I think that the administrative leadership team and whoever was the advisor should have taken into account how this would impact a large community that has helped build this country. I yield the floor.
Thanks, Rino. I also, for people watching, I put a link to a presentation in the chat. We have it on the agenda later, and there's board policy and board rules cited that this was a clear violation of. And so, it's not just the yearbook guidelines at the Jones School level. And also has a background of like what this discussion is about, in case someone watching doesn't know. Ellen, do you want to go ahead?
I'm for sure. I just wanted to speak very briefly. I think what Roberto said is far more impactful than what I could add. I just wanted to echo what Sarah had said about bringing concerns to administration. I think that the more awareness that they have, that there needs to be more clear guidelines, the better, right? Like, I think we can all benefit from that. I will speak to yours, I think you had a suggestion or question about whether yearbook quotes would just not exist, and that is something that's being considered. And I wanted to further say that as a teacher at the school, there's been conversations going on within the teaching staff as well regarding this, and recognizing that like, this is not just like a one moment. This is like part of an ongoing conversation that we need to have more of with each other and with our students. So, just trying to make it clear that this is more than just a single quote, but like, is part of a larger, broader conversation and part of teachable moments in time.
Thank you, Ellen. Sarah, did you want to read your statement now, or from the teacher now?
Yes, I, I put it in the chat, but I also, I will read it. This is from Brian Bastard. It's the English department. I hope I'm saying that correctly. "The U.S. Supreme Court has made it clear time and time and again that high school students do not have absolute free speech rights inside a high school, and that schools can limit student voice in school-sponsored publications. And the circumstances of our yearbook Hazel Word versus Kuhlmeier for 484 U.S. 268 in 1988 makes it clear that school-sponsored publications have a legitimate interest in preventing the publication of material that a school deems inappropriate and that might appear to have the imprimatur, sorry, of the school. Our yearbook has never been a public forum in which students have absolute free speech rights. The school must be able to set high standards and can restrict speech reasonably related to legitimate pedagogical concerns. It is quite evident that JCP has legitimate pedagogical concerns in censoring the yearbook because the quote in question is contrary to the values of Jones College Prep and the city of Chicago, and makes many of our students and their families feel unwelcome because of their national origin and ancestry. From our mission, JCP is committed to the equality and dignity of all persons, regardless of background. Chicago itself is a sanctuary city whose welcoming ordinance promises that Chicago will not ask about anyone's immigration status, nor will it deny services based on said status. Chicago's mission has been to be the most immigrant-friendly city in our country. Quote in question clearly references an exclusionary border policy that is built around the idea that many of my students and their families do not belong in the United States, in Chicago, or at Jones. We cannot let this quote have the imprimatur of JCP. When I was told this quote was in our yearbook, I immediately thought of one of my former students whose family immigrated from Mexico. She relied on the CTA to traverse the two miles between her home and Jones. However, with the change in presidential administration, rumors swirled through her community that ICE had begun to set up checkpoints on the CTA. They were just unsubstantiated rumors, but if there was the slightest possibility of truth, she could no longer take the train. So, living in fear, she walked to Jones instead, March to June, knowing that once she arrived, she would be safe. We have a mission to make our students like her feel welcomed. Thus, JCP has a strong pedagogical interest in censoring the quote in question from the yearbook that is just as strong as a former student's right to voice that quote in forms other than our yearbook." Brian Bastard.
Thank you for that. Okay, so I think we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. We'll come back to this and, you know, cover the basics of it then. And, but I think for now, we are done with public comment.
I'm going to sign off. I thank you for listening. The only thing I have to add is I was not stating the school doesn't have the power. I don't need my fancy Harvard Law School degree to know that. I'm just stating, I don't think it, it ultimately goes to the right value, and we can agree to disagree on that. So, but I respect what you all said, and I thank you for listening.
Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda, we have reports. The principal's report, there's a link there. Dr. Powers is on vacation from June 9th to June 30th, so he cannot be here tonight. And, sorry for that. And does anyone have any comments on that report that we don't have a number of the administration here to answer any questions people have? But I'm, I think it's fine to put them in the record that we have them. So, council members, go ahead. Sarah?
Um, my comment, I have two comments. One was that I was very disappointed that we couldn't get another administrator here, nor do we have Troy. And I was disappointed in that. And then the other, the other thing that's very concerning to me is this comment that, where was it, Cassie, about the?
The selective enrollment and vendor, yes, it says, "We will not be participating in round two with respect to selective enrollment admissions as the vendor contracted by CPS cannot replicate the four-tier selection enrollment process." So, I don't know if that is a Jones-specific issue. I asked Dr. Powers about that because he sent this report a few days ago and did not get an answer with respect to that. I don't know if other selective enrollment schools are also having this issue with their second round of admissions. It seems like it should be, you know, something that the board, like the district level should be addressing if so. And I could not get specific numbers telling us how this will impact our admissions. I think we were below our target enrollment for freshmen by 60 students as of May 10. And so, it says here that we'll expand our CTE enrollments from the waitlist to try to make up for that lack of round two for selective enrollment. And I did, I think Dr. Powers did say in an email that they are going to try to add some additional transfers as well for sophomore, junior. Did I have that correct, Sarah? Yeah, but I don't really know exactly where we are for the four classes and how close we are to getting 1970. And I think our goal was 1960, or like the hold harmless below was 1960. And so, we approved, I think in April, to give essentially, give that money back if it turns out we don't have 1970 students as of the fall. So, that's the situation there. Ellen?
And this is very much just from one conversation I had with Dr. Powers, but my understanding is that it is a problem across the board with the vendor. So, we just briefly spoke about this a few weeks ago. And I'm not sure whether that's impacting whether selective enrollment schools are being held harmless or not. So, that's maybe a question that we might want to escalate because this is, again, not through any fault of the school itself that this is occurring.
Thanks. Yeah, that's the thing. It seems like something that could impact enrollment a lot, and in a student-based budget system where a very large chunk of your budget is directly dependent on enrollment, it's a problem. I do see Mr. Bernie on here, so Mr. Bernie, do raise your hand if you have insight to any of this. Be happy to have you jump in. Sarah?
I guess my concern is what happened that the vendor cannot replicate the four-tier selection enrollment process? I have no idea how you would not be able to replicate that. And so, um, and I feel like if this was happening at every selective enrollment high school, we would, don't you, I just think there would be some buzz about it. So, I just would like some further clarification, hopefully, that can be offered. But it's, it seems very substantial. And also, all the kids that this could impact, like we're missing, you know, the ability to accept 60 more kids into selective enrollment high school. You'd think the parents would be losing their minds. So, that, that's, that's, I think that this is kind of like put in here, but it's a huge deal to me.
Thanks. Any other questions on here? Yeah, I think we will just, we can just pass that comment along, Sarah, to Dr. Powers and see if he can give us some answers. Yeah, because the budgetary impact is actually quite substantial. Okay. Next report is the equity initiative report. We have not had an equity initiative report for several months. So, we will not have one this evening. Next up is the student report. Alexandra?
Yeah, I was going to give an oral report today. We don't really have a lot, I guess, to talk about. Senior events happened in the past month, couple of weeks. Those all went well. You know, Daniel and Will are happy to be graduated. We had our last day of finals today, obviously. That all went smoothly as far as I can tell. And then, yeah, I don't know if there's really anything else on the student end with how, I guess, finals-oriented everything has been and how little we've been doing, I guess, within the school other than that.
Any drinking fountains working?
Sorry, what did you say?
I said any drinking fountains have been repaired. I know that was like the big thing in the last two meetings, so.
I don't really, I don't think I've ever used a drinking fountain, and so I haven't heard about it, so I don't know. But hopefully, I know every time I've been by one, like probably since the beginning of the year, the filter status has been like red, and that hasn't changed. It's pretty consistently been that way. So, I'm guessing no.
Yeah, and a lot of those, a lot of, I have one at my school. A lot of them don't actually have filters, but the filter status will still come on, and you can override that, which I do at my school because I don't, sometimes they don't have physical space in the wall for a filter. So, just when you think you're getting filtered, what, you're not.
Any other council members? Thank you, Alexandra, for your report solo this month. If not, we can move on to PPLC. Kim and Ellen?
Yeah, last PPLC meeting or report for the year.
Yeah, last PPLC meeting or report for the year from us, so here it goes. The PPLC met with members of the teaching staff on the 23rd to discuss any concerns the staff would like us to discuss with admin. We then met with members of admin the following week on the 31st. At this meeting, we discussed needs for clearer communication regarding school-wide policies. Uh, we began planning for next school year and we followed up on agenda items from previous meetings. Teachers experienced student behavior concerns and wanted further information about proper steps to take when these behavior concerns or incidents occur. Dr. Powers asked that teachers email the administrative team so that the administration could handle the situation. He also asked that teachers contact security if the issue was an immediate security concern. Teachers also requested an internal calendar detailing the usage of commonly-used spaces like the theater or classrooms and spaces that are used on the weekend by outside organizations. This would make it easier for clubs to schedule usage of shared spaces and it would be helpful to know which rooms are in use over the weekend to ensure these spaces are prepared for others to use. A calendar does exist, but it is unclear who has access to the calendar. So, Dr. Powers stated he would follow up with Mr. Hillbrands to ensure that the calendar gets shared with the staff using an accurate emailing list. Uh, current teacher, LSC reps, Ellen and I, met with the new teacher representatives and talked about elections for PPLC, um, for the fall and that will be facilitated by Emlyn Ricketts and Frank Hashimoto in the fall when they take over for us. Lastly, we followed up about issues discussed in previous meetings. We brought up a student concern about the process of getting students out of the building at dismissal time. Dr. Powers mentioned that admin and security will be looking for alternative ways to ensure that students are exiting the building at dismissal. We also discussed communication needs about Eagle Lab and Eagle Lab lessons for next year, planning and implementation of safety drills and school-wide policies regarding tardies and cutting class. Dr. Powers said that he would be following up with New Root, the creators of the curriculum used for Eagle Lab lessons and that the administrative team would be discussing policies to be implemented this upcoming school year. The final, sorry, the final follow-up item was a request for admin to send out the roles and responsibilities list to the entire staff once it's finalized. And that is our last PPLC report.
Uh, thanks, Kim. Alexandra?
Um, I remember a couple of meetings ago talking about like Title IX training for students that we were supposed to be getting that we haven't been getting. I was wondering if maybe there was a possibility to put some of that into like the Eagle Lab stuff and at that time, consider implementing some of that training?
Yeah, I know. I feel like they did that in gym classes and English classes at the end of this year, but that is definitely something that we can bring to the, to the future PPLC and admin team for the zero week and talking about what they're doing with that. So, thank you for that suggestion.
Uh, Sarah?
I guess I'm, did they give you a timeline on, the calendar seems like a pretty simple thing to, to get, that people could subscribe to or something? And, um, and was the goal that you would have editable access? Or does, is still, is this bottleneck because you're waiting for one person to update the calendar? Or is there, wait, you're, I guess, looking for a reservation system?
So, I think we have something of a reservation system. Like, there's definitely, like, I know when I've planned events, like, I go talk to Troy and I think there's a forum now that gets filled out. I will be honest, I haven't tried to use spaces outside of my classroom this school year. I think just like a question of just what is available, when would be super helpful? So, when you're looking to plan an event, if you can see what's already blocked out for usage, that would be very helpful. I know there was a, um, kind of a triple booking of the auditorium, um, in the week leading up to, um, I believe it was the orchestra concert, there's just like three things were meant to, or maybe it was choir concert. Three things were meant to happen simultaneously in there and it was just a little bit rocky because there wasn't just that one go-to reference point. And so, it's possible just like communication threads got crossed without having that reference.
Okay, it sounds like a dev form, hopefully will help. And then, what is your feeling of actually having some of these discipline things worked out in time to start the school year with this new guidelines? Or, I know that at the last meeting, Dr. Powers talked extensively about these committees that were being formed. So, I don't, I, I just, I just don't know if, I guess I'm feeling like I don't think things will happen by August, but maybe I'll be proven wrong.
Yeah, I think that's a concern. We have a shorter summer than we normally do. So, in terms of the committees, because that's kind of like one question, I don't think we've heard much follow-up about them. I think we've had a little bit of, like, Mr. Lopez has asked for some input regarding culture and climate. So, that's like the one that we've kind of heard about via email. In terms of policies and procedures, at the most recent PPLC meeting with admin, we did, um, ask like what the process would be like, like whether teacher input, student input would be considered. Um, and we were told that like the administration would be, um, making these decisions and creating these policies on their own. So, I'm not sure what that timeframe is, but it looks like it's kind of going to happen within that team. I think they are planning extensive meetings over the summer.
So, just to clarify, you said that admin is just going to take, do that with, they feel like they, they don't need, they have enough information that they don't need teacher or student input?
That was my understanding from the meeting that we had on the 31st.
I'd also just like to add in a cautiously optimistic way that that is like the first time that they've actually, well, I can't say that, I won't say the first time, but it's like a time where they've actually taken ownership to create policies. In the past, it's always been the discretion of the teacher, discretion of the classroom, like create your own department policy or do things. And this is the first time that we've really been like, no, we need a school-wide policy created for tardies and cuts. And it's, I feel like the first, one of the few times that they've really been like, okay, we hear that you need a school-wide policy that it can't be teacher to teacher. So, I don't know what that will look like, but it felt, I don't know, it felt kind of good to be heard in that respect. But that's all I'll kind of add.
Thanks. Any further questions or comments for Ellen and Kim? Okay, if not, we will, uh, move on to, oops, let me see who that is. And some comments in the chat. Thanks for your service, Kim and Ellen from Lenny and Deborah, and for representing the teachers so well this year. And, uh, yes, related, thanks to Alex. Alex, we had a certificate for you, like a physical certificate for you last time. So, I hope that it made it to you. Uh, so, thank you guys all for your student-teacher input, which is really just crucial to having a, you know, a non-abstract discussion of how things are going in the school. Okay, next up is the Friends of Jones report. Raquel?
So, I'm going now and Michelle will go later or Michelle? Okay. So, first, I just wanted to say that I'm very passionate about the roles that I play at my kids' schools and, um, I've been very sick for the past like two months in and out of hospital and things like that. And that's why I am today doing the May and June report for Friends of Jones. So, Friends of Jones hosted a successful spring event at the Fairly in April on the 29th. Uh, we have provided volunteers for numerous senior events that happened, Decision Day, Prom, Yearbook Signing, Graduation Rehearsal, their Great America Trip, and for today's end-of-year treats. Next year's terms officers will be Chair Michelle, Vice Chair Laney, Secretary Carla Robinson, and Treasurer Kishi. Friends of Jones has awarded over $28,000 in grants in May and June. And the following grants were submitted and awarded during the, oh, I made a mistake. It's May and June, it's not just June. But this is for May and June. SGA for Transportation to Great America. Dance coach, um, asked for money for, to offset the cost of summer dance camp for the students. And the Asian American Club wanted to gift, uh, the graduates from the club jerseys. And they also wanted a videographer for their showcase. The French teacher asks for a grant for a French culture field trip, student government prom-related activities, Black Collision graduation, had an end-of-year dinner and graduation ceremony. Um, that was for that and their families. The Law Club asked for a grant for end-of-year celebration. And the Athletic Department asked for, um, a grant to pay for buses for all of the spring sports. The Chemistry Department asked for numerous equipment items that would impact over 100, 400 students every year. The Choir Teacher asked for a grant to cover travel-related expenses to, um, for her professional development, uh, which was, I guess, out of state. And the French teacher asked for the same thing as well. And one of the coaches asked for, um, a grant for end-of-year celebrations for the JV and varsity teams. Um, just a little heads up, freshman connection will be in July, the weeks of July 18th through the 20th. And also the week of the 25th through the 29th, we will have a parent coffee, um, each week of the freshman connection. And we will also have a parent social on July 27th, which is also the second week of the freshman connection. And, um, that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Raquel. I hope you're feeling better.
Hey, I'm on the bed, but it was serious. So, if no one has any questions or comments, then thank you for your time.
Thanks. The, um, okay, um, next up is the Budget Committee report.
I would just say we met on June 6th at 3:15. We had a very short meeting. Just kind of wrapped, wrapped up. We talked a little bit about the lease, which we'll talk about when we get to approvals. But other than that, um, looking forward to handing the reins over for the Budget Committee to the new LSC. And, uh, yeah, I think it's in good shape.
Uh, any questions for Sarah or? Yes, so Lenny says in the chat, "Thank you to Sarah and the Budget Committee for all your work." Go ahead, Mr. Bernie.
Sorry, and I'm driving now. I left the school. So, I've been in and out of the meeting a little bit. I just wanted to say thanks to the Budget Committee. Uh, this was, uh, I'll be honest, a unique structure, uh, for me, being a part of many LSCs and having the involvement, uh, has been helpful, uh, quite honestly, in, in having, uh, everyone's input, uh, rather than having to tear it all apart later, uh, having the, having discussions on the front end as, you know, being a newbie coming in mid-year has been really useful for me, um, having certain conversations and getting the history. So, thank you, Sarah, for entertaining, uh, my many questions and, and bouncing ideas off of you. But, uh, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
And, and thanks to you, Mr. Bernie. It's been, it's been great. Thank you.
Okay, um, next up, I put, uh, an item here, annual report of LSC activities. Um, if you click to that link of the school code and find, uh, number 12 on the list of LSC powers and duties, LLC should issue an annual report each year, um, about your activities and accomplishments and your, basically your activities and your financial, programmatic and programmatic activities. We don't really have a, our own internal LSC budget, um, so that financial part isn't really applicable to us. Uh, and we did not do a report last year. We really only, uh, we have an abbreviated term of 18 months rather than 24 months. Um, so I think it makes sense to have a final report of, uh, what we've done over this year and a half rather than just a year. Um, and so, the link is there. Uh, in the, there's a whole folder of annual report materials. And can you find that, Sarah? Oh, great, thanks. Yeah, so that's some supporting documents, uh, to links in the report. I got some assistance with this from Rachel and Sarah, especially on the oversight and the health and safety components. Uh, it's pretty long, so I won't, uh, cover the whole thing. Uh, but basically, it's grouped into communications and transparency, equity, health and safety, and oversight. Um, I think the communications and transparency stuff is pretty straightforward. Uh, I think there's been a, just a great improvement. And I have to say, I think we are, in fact, the, um, documentation and the Compliance with the Open Meetings Act and just general transparency on what activities of the LSC are, uh, is probably some of the, the best in the city. Um, and I'm, I'm happy to take on anyone who'd like to disagree with that. Uh, Sarah has done a great job organizing files, making sure things are there, and, uh, making sure that, uh, both the committees and the full LSC meetings are covered and archived and available. Um, and, uh, with the online streaming and recordings, I think they are in extremely detailed minutes. They are, you know, very accessible. Language-wise, I think they're still not as accessible as they should be. Uh, we have captions, um, through machine translation, uh, of the live stream, which is not awesome. Um, and we have some of our documents translated either through, uh, just LSC members themselves doing it or LSC members paying out of pocket to have stuff translated. That's not really a very sustainable system and it means that not everything gets translated, including like this annual report itself. And so, that I think is something that, uh, is, you know, should be a, should change. With respect to equity, um, we have done a ton of work over the last 18 months. And, um, you know, some of this is statements that we passed, um, some of this is reports. The report, uh, from May 2021 by the LSC Equity Committee member, G Y Sun, is something that I think everyone in the, uh, school community should be reading. And, uh, you know, we've taken action to back those statements in terms of allocating money, revising the, the fee information, revising the dress code. Uh, one, uh, textbook was replaced, um, with, you know, disturbing, questionable, racist content. And, uh, that is a partial success there. We spent a lot of, uh, time and energy on, uh, attempting to address issues of gender parity in the sports department. And, um, most recently, the Equity Committee put together basically questions that need to be answered to really get a hold of this issue. Just at our last meeting, we heard student testimony during color participation about, uh, sexual and physical assault and inappropriate and inadequate response by school staff. Um, and really, this entire year, we've gotten a lot of those reports. We've been reporting them to authorities as we need to. And we, uh, in addition, have shared information about how students, um, and really anyone in the school community should issue reports. And at, basically, uh, in response to our, um, requests, In response to our requests, the Office of Student Protections provided a pilot training for. Parent and community members on the LSC with respect to Title IX, which I think they. Plan to expand beyond just the Jones LSC, which I think is very needed. I don't think LSC members know that they are. Essentially mandated reporters under several of the board policies. And it's clear that that is. You end up playing an important role if it seems like you are responsive to concerns that are brought to you. So that has been a significant issue for us. And this last item was principal discretion admissions by race. That was something that had been asked for for years. And was finally released last December. Health and safety. We also issued some statements. I think the biggest accomplishment here. Was the whole school safety plan that we voted on and the removal of school resource officers. Both of our Jones SROs were removed. I am happy to own that vote. I am happy that we defunded the police here at. Jones College Prep. There's no evidence that armed police officers keep students safe. And we are using that money far more wisely. And I hope that. We are, you know, have been a model for other school communities to to take that step and really use our. Our public funds for true student safety. And I encourage people to really read about what police abolition means and. Learn about that and explore it and figure out what reimagining safety in our country and our state and our city. And our actual school community means. So I, you know. And that is a vote that I will be proud of, and I'm happy that that cannot be undone currently. As part of that, we created a culture and climate coordinator position. And I think people are thrilled to have Mr. Lopez as part of the school community. And I look forward to. Seeing culture and climate policy and actions improve. With the assistance of a dedicated physician. We also, the Health and Safety Committee especially did work related to COVID safety and mitigation measures. Including making, in, you know, at the behest of the committee, getting KN ninety-five masks. Available for the the surge in January. And Cynthia Logan really should get a lot of credit for the information she compiled and shared through the Health and Safety Committee. Some initial work and recommendations on the sex ed curriculum were brought to the committee by students. And I encourage people to take a look at that. And in addition, especially like starting last summer and through the fall. There, the Health and Safety Committee really pushed to get clear, basically, policy and procedures. And a statement of support for transgender and gender not conforming students added to the school website. And we hope if there is a school handbook revision that their draft for that would be added. I think oversight is probably the, one of the longer sections here, and we. Covered a lot. Really, you know, the LSC's primary duties are oversight of the school budget, the school improvement plan. And the principal. The creation of the Standing Budget Committee was a big improvement, I think, towards that end. And. Thank you to Sarah for your work on that. Definitely thank you to Mr. Bernie. That has been, I think, a real. Improvement in terms of additional working with administration on budget matters. And. You know, I really think the transparency of how money is being spent. And where it's coming from has, is vastly different than it was eighteen months ago. And that's because of the work of the LSC. And our pushing back when told that we didn't deserve this information, we shouldn't have this information. It wasn't our right. It wasn't our place. It wasn't the right thing for an LSC to have. And I would like to say that's not true. It's in the school code that we have the right to this information. And it's really unacceptable. And it's, it's really. Disturbing that people have a mindset that a public school using public dollars to educate. The children of the city shouldn't, there shouldn't be transparency in how it's run and how its money is spent and who's benefiting from what. And I don't understand why people would think that keeping things under wraps and not knowing this stuff somehow helps. I think particularly when it comes to really seeing who, how resources are, resources are being allocated and who benefits from that. It's really crucial to have this transparency. And we are extremely lucky in Chicago to have this sort of. Super hyper local institution that is democratically governed. Where we can see how our school is being run and have a say in it. And I don't understand the basically authoritarian urge to hand off our democratic power. To someone else and give away that power. And, you know, from the very first meetings, we were urged to give away our power. And not have transparency on how much on expenditures. And to raise the limit and not see what we were spending money on. And I think that really would have done a disservice. And. Thank you to my fellow LSC members who did not vote to give away our power like that. And I know it's been a pain in some cases, and we've had some special meetings and even emergency meetings to get some approvals done. And I think it's worth it because we actually know way more about how we're spending money as a school than we would have otherwise. So I think. And, you know, there's other highlights here. We'll cover all the rest of this. We've also been tracking progress on basically equity demands and the school's own equity initiatives. I put a final running record tracking report linked here for June. That's something that we've done pretty much, I think, since early twenty twenty-one. There's a description of the principal evaluation process, which was, I think, thorough and fair. And we, in fact, did some work last while about the possibility of adding additional indicators. Which Dr. Powers did not agree to do, but I think it was a good discussion in terms of talking about what priorities. Should be at the school level. And the final item I have on here is voting to approve sending charges to the CEO to request removal. We did that in March. The narrative here, I think, describes how this was not a vote out of nowhere. It came after a lot of, it was a very serious step. After many, many prior steps taken because of the issues with violations of law. Violations of policy, violations of the Uniform Principal Contract, including civil rights violations, including irremediable conduct. And this came after months of us documenting and reporting these issues at every level in the CPS system. Including all the way up to the Board of Ed, including public officials. And that was finally followed by us voting to ask the CEO. To approve charges for dismissal. The investigations of those charges are still ongoing, so this matter is not resolved. And it was a difficult thing to do. It was a lot of work. And I think it is important. Because there's been a lot of harm done in this community. Harm is ongoing in this community. We've reported and documented harm even since March eighth. It has not been addressed appropriately. And I think the really ultimately here, the CEO is not doing his job here either. And there needs to be some sort of additional oversight besides just the LSC. Holding the leadership of the school, in particular Dr. Powers, accountable. And that that's not happening. And, you know, I think we did everything we could as a body. And I am proud that we took those steps and put in the work. Because, you know. Hearing the direct stories from people who have been harmed. And who have not received accountability and still haven't received accountability is, is why we did that. And that's. Ultimately what matters and why it was the right thing to do. So that is a summary of these last eighteen months. And we can, I think we just entered into the record. I don't know if there's really an action that the LSC needs to take. But it will be there as a record of our work. And really, there's been so much work done, you know, thank you all for stepping up. And putting the time in as a volunteer in this school community. Rachel?
I just wanted to say for the record, thank you to Cassie. It's, it's incomprehensible, the amount of work that that the chair has put into this council and. I am so grateful. And it's just such a model example of how to engage locally. And really, really just care with every single action. So I am going to be. Just following your example and also the example of other members, but I just want to especially highlight you, Cassie. As a pre-service teacher, as someone who knows other pre-service teachers. And, you know, as we're watching kind of like public schools become even more privatized, that you're an example of opposing that entirely. So. Thank you. It's, it's been really inspiring. And I, and I mean that in the sense of. Inspiring in the sense of what we can do collectively as opposed to just individually to solve our problems. So. So, yeah, I, there's no other words, but thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. And. We'll kind of mingle the quote, but yes, everything worthwhile is done with other people. So. Yes. And. Yes, so next we have old business listed, but not actually any old business. So I think we can move on to our approvals. And Sarah, do you want to go through those?
Yes. And if Mr. Bernie wants to chime in, I think we'll probably have a few questions on some of these. The first one is a, you know, basic one, forty-one thirty-five for lanyards and plastic sleeves. Getting a jump start on that. The second one is this five-year computer lease that we talked about during the budget presentation. It's for thirty-one thousand three hundred ninety-four and seventy cents a year. So this will be paid using the technology fees. That we've collected. And, Mr. Bernie, go ahead.
Yeah, so since then, we've had some pushback from ITS. They are not allowing leases. So we're back to the drawing board. We are gonna, Joanne told me probably about three o'clock today, two thirty, three o'clock. But they're kicking it back. They won't let us enter into a lease agreement for these machines. I don't know, understand why, but she's looking further into it, but we're looking at other options. So we can disregard this one. But I didn't, I want to give you some context before I say disregard this one.
Okay, wow, well, that's shocking, but not shocking, right? I mean, they've never really let leases before, so.
Well, they, at one point, and I'm sure you guys may know that they were pushing leases, you know, four or five years ago, but. Things have changed, obviously. So, but yeah, disregard this one for this evening, please.
Okay, well, at least, since my time is very short, but I, I'll, I'll follow up with you because I think it'd be great if we could get. You know, I'm sure she's working on it, but a quote for those labs, if, if, obviously, we can't do them all at this time, but to do at least. One, if not two, if we can use this year's fees and maybe some of next year's fees. I don't know.
Yeah, Joanne was into Plan B and C, so.
Okay.
On it because, you know, it affects her directly, so definitely.
Yeah, that's, that's frustrating. Okay, thanks, Mr. Bernie. Forty-seven twenty for AP test exams to the college board. And I don't know if you've dug into this. And maybe Mr. Bernie could talk a little bit. I'm gonna, can I zoom in on this? I don't think so. Not the way that I have it set up. It looks like CPS pays a lot of this. And I just wanted to say. In the fee sheet, it says if you take an AP test, you get charged a fee. I have never, I haven't, I wasn't charged that last year, and I wasn't charged that. This year. And I think it was because CPS was covering some of these fees. And I don't know if you have any information about that, Mr. Bernie.
You're correct. So during, obviously pandemic times, they were covering fees a hundred percent. Now, and I can't, I still can't read that.
I know, I know, I'm struggling here.
And I'm working off a cell phone, so pardon me. But if you see, some of these are late charge fees, different things. And. I did verify this with, before asking you guys to approve this. With Nicole, but these were all legitimate charges per the testing coordinator and also Dr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell.
Right, so. And it is true that students will not be charged for this AP exams this year.
Correct. We're, we're absorbing this cost. There's, no one has been charged. In on their personal accounts for any AP except recently. And when I say recently, in the, the last two weeks. For people who had signed up and did not take it for whatever reason. So there was a forty-dollar fee assessed for the cancellation or just failure to take it.
I see, I see. So then we'll recoup maybe some of this. The, the, and you, this is your first time, your first year here, but in your experience from your other schools. Is this, this late fee, is that just, oh, is this because we had like four people going late or seven people late or something or?
Yeah, and those things happen. But yeah, and normally, you know. I've not really put late fees in, and I wasn't really, I mean, since this was free, I understand. But there were probably fifty or so who were charged a late fee.
Okay.
But I do not have all the background to this, but I, I'm hearing that, you know, they will be charged, like the AP test fee will be a part. CPS will not cover that in the upcoming years.
Correct, yeah. Okay, it's a, yeah, but that's something when we sign up in the fall, that's a fee that we would be paying. When we sign up for the AP class or?
Correct. And once we see, you know, who applies for waivers, we sort of go through that first. So those fees are normally not put onto account until almost second semester, once, you know. Everything sifts and balances out who. Were, you know, what students were eligible for waiver. So we're not overcharging anyone. And it's usually, you know. Not a rush, quite honestly. We're not billed till later on, as you can see, so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I guess I'm going to go back to my minutes. So I'm going to cross, I make a motion, I guess, before I do it. Are there any other questions? Okay, I make a motion to approve. Oh, gosh, Kim, yes. Go ahead.
Sorry, I just, I think I got confused within there. So the late, we're only being charged for the cancellations. Were the students' accounts charged for those cancellations? Or not this year? We're just eating that money.
So there were students, again, from my understanding, who either. Who signed up, first of all, and did not take it or canceled, you know, after. You know, after the cancellation period, you know, there was some combination of both from my understanding. So I was provided a list, and it was a short list. Again, I think it was roughly fifty or so students who were assessed to their individual accounts, a forty-dollar AP test fee, cancellation slash whatever. But yeah, forty dollars.
Okay, then my follow-up question, and this is for like next year. So in this student fees thing, it says like the fee will be assessed for the AP class in January. Now, if a student opts not to take the exam in May, which happens, you know, for whatever reason, would they be charged the forty-dollar cancellation fee on top of the test fee? Or would they just be charged the cancellation fee? And the charge on their account would be like not the ninety-five or whatever. I don't know if that made any sense, but it says like.
Total sense. And I I'm, I don't want to misspeak, so I, so I won't answer that right now.
I just think it's important that we message that, as, I don't know, I teach, I teach all AP classes. So like, this is like a really expensive thing that kids are investing in. If they're not, then I want to make sure that they understand that either they're going to be charged that ninety-five-dollar fee or they're going to be charged the forty-dollar fee. But I just feel like that should be really clear within that student fee sheet. That this, if if CPS isn't picking up the check anymore, then that that that's clear.
Agreed, agreed. I I do agree because that would definitely make my job a lot easier. But thanks for bringing that up, Ms. Bowman. I I think that's valid. And, you know, I think that's definitely a discussion that should be had with the test coordinator. And admin, of course.
Thank you for that. All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve forty-one thirty-five for to Cranley Awards for lanyards and sleeves and forty-seven twenty to the college board for AP testing.
I'll second that motion. Bowman will second.
Okay, um. Roll call, Bowman.
Yay.
Crestwell.
Yay.
Kerr.
Yay.
Land.
Yes.
Manal Hoppinworth.
Yes.
Ma, yes, Martin Sek.
Yes.
Menjivar.
Yes.
Zen.
Yes.
They are approved. And just so everyone knows, like that VirtuCom, where we're going to do the lease, they are an approved CPS vendor. So we didn't go to them because they, you know. That's all. It was, yeah, bye. We had no budget transfers, but we do have some fundraisers. So if Michelle would want to come on board and I'll share your screen. Let me know which one you want to do first and I'll share.
Why don't we start with donation? Because that gives kind of the background. So, um, so to put some context, there are some three fundraising requests that I'm going to make on behalf of FOJ for tonight. The rest of the fundraising approvals will do for the new LSC, since it falls under next year's fiscal. But there are three that are related to freshman connection. So we needed to get approval before probably the next LSC is up and running. So that's what these are about. So it's really to help us make sure that freshman connection is successful. So historically, FOJ has underwritten the cost of freshman connection. We now know that CPS has a budget that is allocated to schools. So we have asked Jones, specifically Dr. Plunkett is working on this, to come to us with the differential of what's not covered by CPS to see if that, if we can fund. We are waiting for that grant. She's working on it. We have not got the final one. But because of the timing, the LSC is not meeting before freshman connection. So we're kind of going on the idea that there's going to be some gap. We don't know how big of the gap it's going to be. But once we approve that, then we will ask for donations from parents. So what happens is after, when the parents come in, when they sign up for freshman connection, there's a welcome to Jones communication that goes out to all parents. We invite them to the parent breakfast. We now invite them to the social event that happens the second week of the two weeks. And then we ask if they can to offset the cost to make a donation of any size. We make a suggestion of the size that typically, that would help cover some of the costs. But it's really, it's completely voluntary. Historically, we've gotten about fifteen thousand dollars for this to offset. So last year, we raised a little bit more, we were about seventeen to cover for the seventy-seven thousand. So you can see, it's not, we're not making money to like the complete or going over. So what we would do is once we know the grant amount that's requested, we'll adjust. Our guess is it's going to come in at about one twenty-five that we would want to recommend. But again, we can adjust that accordingly. And so we guess that we get fifteen thousand because that's historically, it may drop down if we don't ask for as much the cost. And then all that just goes back into underwriting the Friends of Jones donation to the school for the grant coverage. If for some reason, we would make more money than what the grant request is this year, for whatever reason, what we'd like to do is in our notation to the donors, is that that money would just go into the annual fund to be used in the grant process. So I'm asking for approval for us to ask for donations to offset the cost for both the week of the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth of July. And all the other details in here. Any other, I guess I can ask questions or? Yeah. Do you want to call, Cassie?
Sure, Roberto.
I think you're muted.
Hi, Michelle, can everyone hear me? Yes, hi, Michelle. I I just wanted to, so thank you for providing this. And I just want to, in in twenty nineteen, during the LSC, the previous LSC that served in twenty nineteen, they were talking about the freshman connection. And the amount of money that was raised wasn't sufficient for the number of teachers or activities to pay for the teachers and staff that were supporting the freshman connection. And and there was one, I think there was one discussion in twenty nineteen that, that they wanted to make it required. And I just want to make sure, I want to emphasize that it should be voluntary. I know you, you're not making it required. I just want to put it on the record that this should be voluntary. Those who can pay the one twenty-five, or you're looking for, you know, one hundred percent participation in whatever they can donate, they should be, they should feel free like they can, should be able to donate. And those who can pay to one twenty-five, great. So I just want to make sure and emphasize that the freshman connection, whatever offsets or whatever donations you're seeking are voluntary and that we express that, or that FOJ expresses that clearly and that you're looking for a hundred percent participation. The other suggestion I made in twenty nineteen that I just want to present to you in the FOJ board is maybe potentially giving folks an option, right, to encourage participation. Say, hey, the suggested donation is one twenty-five. But if you can donate fifty dollars or seventy-five dollars, that would be, that would help as well. So having a radio button and including that, just because, you know, I donate to various charities and they always give options. So something to consider in the future.
So, and thank you. And we do make a suggestion. And we also say that people can go over the amount. So what we have found is there are some people that will fund a freshman. And so they'll double their donation or triple their donation. And then others will give zero, which is fine. Again, that to me is is what this is about. And whatever we get, it's an offset. But as far as you all know, Friends of Jones earmarks money in our budget, assuming that we're going to pay this. So it's not as if we can't pay it and won't pay it to support the community and building the community. Because this is the first interaction many people have. But I like the radio button idea. But that is the spirit of the note that goes out. So thank you for that reminder.
Sarah? If Mr. Bernie's still on the call, I'm curious if he has any information. I'm sure the principals have to say by a certain date that they want the money. And my concern is that that date has passed and we haven't communicated that we would like the money. Mr. Bernie, I don't, I don't know if you know that date or if, and if, and if you don't, or if you do. But if you don't, if you know anything about restrictions of the funds that we get for freshman connection. Because Dr. Powers had told us that we do a much bigger freshman connection and that we couldn't use those funds. And I I disagree, I think I disagree. And so if you have any information.
I I have no information on this year's freshman connection funding budget or the guidelines. I can only speak from what I've done in other schools at this point. But generally, certain positions and activities have been funded for freshman connection, depending on the enrollment and some of the activities. With regard to Jones, I know this is something that I'm trying to get guidance on, just because I'm will just be very upfront. I'm not going to turn down free money if I can avoid it. So if there's anything we can do to, if there are restrictions to comply and maybe, you know, somehow come to some sort of agreement on on a hybrid type of situation. But I have not been in those conversations, nor have I been privy to any documents outlining the dates nor any, you know, guidelines or restrictions. So I said all that to say, no, not yet.
No, I I I think what I'm saying is I think the date has passed and I'm.
I hope not, but, um, yeah.
And if, and hopefully Dr. Plunkett can find some or any administrator at this point.
Yeah, so Sarah, they start, we started, it may have been the end of February, but it was definitely March and April. I started reaching out to them, saying we need to know the grant amount. And by the way, you have CPS funds, so we're expecting to see that as part of the money raised outside of Friends of Jones. So I know she was in contact with people in the spring. So there, because she was working, she said she contacted people, they were figuring out what could get covered and what couldn't. So I do know that I've hit, touched her probably, you know, there for a while, it felt like every day, but every week, I'm sure it was. And she was working on pulling together numbers and getting approval. So it hasn't sat on not being worked on. So hopefully, I don't know the date, if there's a date with CPS, but it's not as if nothing's been done and we're just having the conversation now.
I appreciate that. I'm glad, I'm happy to hear that. There was talk that she has been in contact with Budget Office.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, do we want to do all of them at once or do you want to do each one? How do you guys want to do?
I think it's all three. Yeah, yeah, and probably it'll be all one motion.
Then let's go to the Jonesware pop-up. So in Coral, and again, to get the timing, we're going to have pop-up events, the carry on the Jonesware pop-up sale on the Tuesday of freshman connection. We were proposing that. It's the day of the parent coffees. And so we have found that historically, if you tie, what we're learning through the pop-ups is you need to tie them to an event, especially when there's parents there because they've got the checkbooks or the credit cards or the dollars. And so we're thinking that this would be a good time to have these two events. So our plan would be to hold them onsite. And you can see the dollars estimated, six thousand dollars for both of, to cover both events. So guessing three thousand each week. We don't get, as I've said in the other, we don't have huge margins on our Jonesware. It's more to create that spirit or the build the community spirit. So you'll see that the net profit would be about fourteen hundred dollars. So that's that one. Is there any questions about this? If not, we can go to the last one. So the reason the five K's popping up is we announce it at the parent coffees. And so we want to be able to start communicating that there's this event coming. We usually get volunteers to help and people sign up. So before we could announce it, I wanted to get approval from you all that we can carry on with this tradition of the five K run. Last year, we, this last year, the eighty-five twelve oh seven is what we netted from a profit perspective. In the, I attached to this, the detailed payout of what went to which club. But the distribution of this, this event is slightly different than our others, where the money goes into a general that had, goes to the grant process. For this, people can designate an organization that they, or a club, or the class, wherever they'd like their enrollment fees or registration fees to apply. And then whatever they designate to Friends of goes into the general fund. So we would like to follow that same format moving forward. If we get approval to move forward with this event, then we have to call the Park District as the next step to actually secure a date. But it'll be in September and October. But we wanted to get approval before we moved forward because there's a cost to getting that permit. So this is this year's, this is the twenty-one event. And I had all best intentions to give you the reporting, the accounting report. And Mr. Bernie can tell you, it's been quite the fun adventure to get that all together. And then I left it in, I didn't take a picture of it, so I didn't have anything electronically to share with you guys with the proper signatures. But all of this has been looked at and signed off of. Mr. Bernie has it and is working with us to get the, cut the proper allocations.
Go ahead, Sarah.
I would just say that thank you for all of this hard work and the first time will be the hardest. And then now that you've done all this, the groundwork, it will just be like, oh, just do, do what I did last time, look at what I did. So I really appreciate it. I know we've been a pain in the, the whatever. And, uh, but I love that you, you guys figured out how to do that, that the final reconciliation report. And, um, and I think it will just get easier.
So the good news, Sarah, is we actually did this. This was the format that we had actually used internally. The difference was, and I'm an Excel geek. And so some of it, I automated a little bit more to make it easier, to your point, for next year. What you don't see, which is something new that we're doing with all our fundraisers, is a reconciliation report so that we keep track of our expenses and our revenue. What I have found is the CPS accounting form does not really apply to the type of stuff we're doing. And so it's not really meaningful. And so we're going to be providing, we have a better lens that we're going to actually probably give you more detail because it's how we run the the organization. But just netting it out the way you have to net it out, it doesn't really tell the story. So the proper, you know, because again, our, as a board, we're really committed to making sure that we're good stewards of the money and that our expenses are controlled so that there's more profit that goes back. So we're really watching all of that and none of that really comes out in that accounting form. So you'll see as we start to present these out, the stuff that we're looking at, we'll share with the LSC in our reporting back. So that's the level of detail. But what happened, just to be transparent, is the original check that we wrote to the school had the FOJ money in it by mistake. And so we had to rewrite a check because it was kind of silly to give them money to give back. So we ended up having to recut the check. But what you saw, the total number has everything. So you can see even FOJ's amount is in there, but we're good. We're on it. Cassie, do you want to call?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Michelle, I appreciate you providing this breakdown on the five K, the Jones five K. It's the first time I've ever seen something like that presented to at least the public and maybe the LSC. So that's helpful to see how many people registered, how many people signed up for the five K and donated to the various clubs. So I would encourage FOJ and it sounds like that you all will continue to do that.
Yeah. The other thing that's interesting is this last year, just so you know, normally we get sponsorships that over, that's what, how we pay for the cost is through the corporate sponsorships. Because of the pandemic, we did, we got zero sponsorships. So FOJ underwrote that cost so that we could keep the payment to the clubs at the amount and not have to have them eat the expense. So we, we helped balance that out this year. Hopefully, next year, we'll get the corporate sponsorships back up again and then that will, that will cover the cost. More information than you all care or need to know, I'm sure.
From the YouTube chat. CPS employee at another school said, for us, freshman connection training is including budgeting and finances happened in May. So I, that's why I'm alluding to, I think that we missed it, but maybe Dr. Plunkett had that. I don't know if it's.
And she may have, because I, the last I got from her was probably the last week of May. And I asked for it and she said she was working on it right then. She was putting.
Okay, that's good. So maybe she has the budget and then she's trying to figure out.
Correct.
I hope she goes, Mr. Bernie, I hope she goes to you. Okay, um great. So are there any other questions about these? Otherwise, I'm, I'll, I'll do it as one motion unless anyone feels strongly and wants it separate. Okay, so I make a motion to approve the following Friends of Jones fundraisers, the five K Eagle Run. Solicitation of donations for freshman connection and the Jonesware pop up sales during freshman connection.
Menjivar seconds.
Okay, Bowman.
Yay.
Aswell.
Yay.
Kerr.
Yay.
Land.
Yes.
Manah Happenworth.
Yes.
Ma, yes, Martinsek.
Yes.
Menjivar.
Yes.
Zen.
Yes.
Okay, those are approved and. Yeah, I think you have to sign those. Okay.
So Cassie, you want to sign them and then send them back to me and then I'll get Dr. Power's signature?
Yeah. That sounds good.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, thank you so much, Michelle, for all.
You see with the five K, walking or running.
Definitely walking.
Hopefully, it won't rain this year. We were like all wet. And Sarah, you have a freshman, so maybe we'll see what freshman connection stuff, breakfast.
Yeah, coffee.
The party, Deborah went to the party last year at the, it's at, um just so you all know, it's at a. Taylor Street Tap, is it what it's called here? It's a, actually, it's a Jones family member who owns the bar, so they donate it. And um so for incoming freshman parents as well as um transfer parents are going to be invited, so. If that applies to you, come on down. It's fun.
He uh so under new business item B. Rachel and I prepared a short presentation about. Basically, academic tracking, I don't, do you want to just bring it up, Sarah? I'll give a little background on why. We wanted to put this on the agenda for this. Meeting and. Rachel, you can just chime in as well where you. Want, uh so for some background. Basically, earlier this spring, um there essentially was some discussion, uh some parents straight information that. There could be an institution of academic tracking at Jones. Right now, there's not really tracking. Everything is honors. Um and then the sort of any tracking that really happens is uh that there are AP classes. Especially as you go uh in, become upperclassmen. And uh but otherwise, really, it's kind of all level. One level essentially, um maybe with a little bit of distinction in math, I guess. Kim could weigh in on that. So uh the, I I don't know whether this is officially under consideration for implementation in coming years at Jones. But we did want to make sure that the school community is aware of some background about what academic tracking means. What the implications are, especially with respect to equity and with academic outcomes. And so uh Rachel, can, do you want to just talk about that a little bit? So you go ahead.
And I mean, yeah, um thanks for for working on this with me, Cassie. Basically, tracking, um the the long and short of it is that it doesn't work. And um research has shown that it actually harms students more than it helps them. That's kind of the like main takeaway. Um and there's so much research on this. We included some, some sources, but honestly, it doesn't even scratch the surface. And so separating students by by their ability level. Is is really separating them by their perceived ability, um which is really hard to actually accurately assess. Um and so what you end up doing when you implement tracking is you you typically just reproduce. Race and class. Hierarchies in the school. And this is, this is not my um field of study, but I was kind of overwhelmed by the amount of research that says this. And um so I guess maybe we can, I don't know what. Um I mean, yeah, I guess to to kind of, to continue, um to be more specific, um can go back a slide. And back a slide. So students of color, especially Black and Latino students, are underrepresented and and gifted in honors classes compared to white students. And a school like Jones is a little bit of a different situation because, because of the history of the school being just having honors classes for most of. Most subjects. But if if the school were to implement, implement tracking, I would not be surprised to see. Students of color um being tracked into classes um that are not the honors classes. And what this ultimately does is it produces reduced achievement um in students who are tracked into lower. Lower level classes and it increases the gaps um compared to the peers who are assigned to their honors courses, so sorry, one second. That would be my, I was cooking. Um okay, so. Um I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, that piece of it, Cassie.
Um I think the thing that I think uh should also be noted here is that. The trend really is towards de-tracking, um especially in districts that are trying to seriously address equity issues. Especially racial equity issues and class equity issues. Um and uh Evanston Township High School detract now more than a decade ago. Um and uh it is not a panacea, um as the quote in blue says. You know, they are still struggling to make uh those advanced class spaces, ones that have traditionally been dominated by white students welcoming and safe for everyone. And uh Oak Park River Forest, uh their board held a vote last fall to de-track. And if you uh, you know, look up some of the discussions and research, both districts, I think, really. Went in depth before they made this decision to de-track. Um and so I think any uh suggestion that uh we should track should really be. Taken uh very seriously uh it with respect to what the outcomes are, have shown about tracking like Rachel highlighted. Earlier in the presentation. Um and then the next slide has some resources. And uh links and I think especially that one uh from the Century Foundation, the last one. Integrating classrooms and reducing economic tracking. Um that one, I think, is interesting because it also talks about like what you do instead. And what the alternatives are, uh and I think that's a really important thing to think about, especially. You know, if. If we're serious about trying to address opportunity gaps and trying to address disparities. Which we've already seen in the sort of limited uh tracking we have into AP classes. I think that is something to to keep in mind. Uh go ahead, Deborah.
So um I just wanted to share a little bit of insight into what I think might be actually happening at Jones. Um I was in a meeting today that involved one of the case managers at Jones. And we were talking about English and tracking in English. And if you look at the course offerings for next year, the course offerings are showing honors, English and AP, English. It is not showing a non honors English in the course offerings. But the case manager told me that they're planning to make that change and that some students may be slotted into a non honors class. And that makes me very uncomfortable in terms of potential violations of least restrictive environment. Students may need accommodations regardless of which level they're put into. And I'm not sure that taking a student who has um a particular issue that needs an accommodation in an English. English class and automatically dumping them into a lower level is the appropriate way to approach this. And so I know those conversations are happening at Jones. Because the case manager told me today in a meeting I was in.
Thanks for that, uh Deborah, and that is a good transition um to. This next part of this presentation um with respect to least restrictive environment. Uh do you want to like do this slide, Rachel?
Yeah, I also just want to answer a couple of questions in the, in the chat. So the, the students would be tested, if I'm understanding it correctly, into the, the non honors options. It would not be, um actually, I don't even know if I want to say that because there's just not enough information about how it's going to be implemented. If it is going to be implemented, and that's kind of before we go to the least restrictive environment. Um one thing I did want to mention is that if, if tracking is considered as a, as an option or as a potential plan. Giving teachers less than three months to plan curriculum for, for tracked classes is. Absolutely, I just, it's not okay. Um and uh there is just not a lot of clarity. So I just wanted to bring that up. If if it's something that's going to be implemented, you'd think that there would be a lot of time, at least a year, for teachers to prepare, but. I don't know if if Miss Melman wants to go next.
Just go ahead, Kim.
All right, sorry, I was wait, I was waiting on the uh, the okay to go. I I will, um I will say we have an all, we are called for an all staff meeting tomorrow. We don't really have information as a staff right now, what's happening and. The suspicion is that we will find out tomorrow at the all staff meeting of what would be happening. And I just want to clarify because I am like the placement, I deal with all incoming freshmen, benchmark testing. I am the co-chair who is in charge of that. So a couple of things, students, when we looked at data, like this is a really equity is like a huge thing in our department. And something we focus on in tracking is something we talk about a lot, especially with regards to math and gender representation. And everything that we can think about, which is why after freshman year, students self-select into whatever course they have. And then we as teachers look at that data to see how are we messaging to students? And also like it, are certain students self-selecting into different classes and why might that be? And we've ever, also gone as far as to for the incoming freshman, that whatever I send out is a recommendation. It is not a placement and we're, I'm really careful with that language. I had ten phone calls today talking about. What what's going to be best for an individual child and where we can find success and all that kind of stuff. So I just want to be clear that even in math, we're not necessarily like. Now, if it's a pair, I guess a parent doesn't say anything beyond freshman year, everything is student choice and there are no prerequisites. There are just strong recommendations for AP classes in the math department. And I I can't speak to other ones, but I just want to put that out there. And at the freshman level, we're trying to figure out ways to make sure that we give kids. The option and especially kids that don't have access to like Algebra One CPS curriculum. We still offer our Math One Benchmark and different things that they can take to, to decide. And then from there, it's like, this is our recommendation. Now, if you don't want to go against it, like, we're gonna default you into it. But parents will always have the option and students will always have the option for us to discuss what that looks like and we're trying to always reflect on that. So we're not trying to place kids or to track kids into Math One, Two and Three. We're really trying to just inform them on data-driven decisions. To make that best decision for their self and their family. Um so I just wanted to clarify that because I saw something in the chat as well.
Thanks, and can I ask about the the A B, like some of the math, I think, has like A and B in that, are those kind of tracks? Are they the same way where the, you like, here's our recommendation, but we're not letting you what to do?
So in Math One and Math Two, we've eliminated the A versus B. So historically, we had a Math Two A versus a Math Two B. And the difference within them were pacing. So the two, the B classes move at a faster pace than the A classes do. Which means they get into more enrichment topics with the same critical skills. Beyond freshman year, that is a, the math teacher then says, okay, there is an A class and a B class and students will self-select into those courses. And if they, like, we'll be like, hey, we think like, if you want the challenges, it's good. If you're like doing this, so we have one-on-one conversations. But the biggest difference is that B moves faster than A. They're both honors level. We have since gotten rid of the A B on Math One and Math Two, so the only A B split classes are at three and four. If, does that answer your question?
Thanks so much. Rachel, do you want to?
Yeah. So then the next part of this little slide deck is um about least restrictive environment, um which, if you're not aware. It's something I'm really passionate about, um but also is seldom, seldom practiced in public schools, I would say. Which is, at least restrictive environment refers to a requirement in um federal and state. Education law that says that students with disability. Maximum extent appropriate um with non-disabled peers. Um and so this was part of the um Individuals with Disabilities Education Act nineteen ninety. Um and so I'm sure you're, you're thinking, yes, this can be interpreted. In so many different ways, but um in terms of Illinois state law, um what what it calls for is. Students with um individualized education plans to be in a class that is composed of students with at least seventy percent. Non IEP students. Um I kind of botched that, but the, the point is that students with IEPs. Where, where and uh where it's appropriate are with students without them. To kind of honor and 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 put into practice this, this tenant of least restrictive environment. And I guess we can maybe go to the next slide to talk about why we're talking about it. The reason that we're talking about it is because CPS is. In an, what they, what they call an equity move, um which I would agree with, is they're trying to um increase the number of students um with IEPs. Students with disabilities at selective enrollment high schools. And there's some quotes here from um CPS Equity Toolkit, which is from December of twenty twenty. Which is that, starting with this past school year. The district will require selective enrollment high schools to offer a proportional number of their incoming freshman seats to diverse learners. Or um students with disabilities. So I think there's, yeah, there's a statistic um at the bottom there. Fourteen percent, over fourteen percent of the district's um student population. Classified, is classified as a diverse learner, but only six percent of students enrolled um in the eleven selective enrollment high schools. Qualify under that category or are classified in that category, so that's like a disproportionate. Underrepresentation basically in selective enrollment um high schools. Um and so the solution to this is to increase enrollment of diverse learners at selective enrollments such as Jones. And so um we're bringing this up because. The, to, to honor the tenant of least restrictive environment should be, should be a top priority. As Jones increases its. Student, as population of students with IEPs.
Yes, I can kind of, if you want to go back to the specific numbers at Jones. What this has meant for Jones, we have a cluster program, so I think probably about. Say roughly half the uh students uh with IEPs at Jones have been uh in the cluster program. And now with the, this push by CPS, we have more students who are in. Like either all the time in general classrooms or uh only less than twenty percent of the time. And this is expected to continue for next year. And uh, you know. General education teachers need supports. And there's also legal requirements here. If you do need, oh, you know, I say. Uh a special education teacher providing services for you, a, a general education teacher can't be providing that. And so there's legal, there's like restrictions as well. As these numerical restrictions. And so I think the issue becomes that the one. And so I think the issue becomes that, the one that Deborah mentioned, if IEP students are being tracked into a particular track, then you will quickly run into issues with violating least restrictive environment and probably violating providing students with the free and appropriate public education because their IEPs are very specific about what services they need and whether they need to be provided by a special education teacher. And that's, that's a huge civil rights issue and a huge practical issue for how classes are being run. So I think, you know, this is a decision to start tracking or that especially if it impacts students with IEPs, is a major decision. And the implications of academic tracking are largely negative. And schools with an equity focus are moving away from tracking. And so I think all of that should be under discussion in great public detail if this is something that Jones is considering. Go ahead, Deborah.
I think one point of clarification for people who are not involved in the diverse learner community, just because a student may have an IEP does not also mean that they could not be academically gifted. And to try and take academically gifted students, but because they have an IEP for a particular support and pull them out of say, an honors track or an AP track, if that would otherwise be an appropriate place for them is concerning.
It's also very lazy. Because I think what one of the slides said is that there's a lot of training that is required. Is it this one? General education teachers? Yeah, they need the PD. And so I think a selective, I think no one should be lazy if we can. If we need to ask for more money for support to support diverse learners, then that's what we need to do.
Yeah, and I think CPS, if you read like what little they have released about their goal of increasing students' IEPs at selective enrollment high schools, they have said in writing several times that, you know, resources should not be an issue. So that's why we've gotten some additional positions assigned to Jones this year and last year. But if those are not sufficient resources for the services and the IEPs as they are written for the students that we have, then we need to advocate and ensure that everyone is getting their appropriate placement and their appropriate education. And not just, you know, doing some sort of, yeah, what I think Sarah rightly says is this, you know, easy way out, which is in fact a very harmful way out. I don't know what the final slide was. Do you want to show that in case we skipped something? Is this the final slide?
Yes, this is my final slide.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Roberto.
Yes, my concern with tracking is that in addition to all the information that you've provided in this slide deck, in this presentation, is the other factor is the parents who can advocate the hardest, who have the resources and the time, will be able to move their child from a non-honors class to an honors class to an AP class. And this will put certain families at a disadvantage who don't have the time, don't have the resources, or who may have limited English proficiency to advocate for their child and advocate for their child to be in an honors class, to be in an AP class. This has been reported previously where students of color have been discouraged or scared. You know, they've used certain scare tactics to discourage them from taking advanced placement classes. And that's a disservice to everyone. So this is a big concern is like, who can be, which, which family can advocate the strongest to move their child up? And that's not, that's not equitable. So tracking, I think, there's just a lot of problems. And the increase in the number of students who are coming in with an IEP doesn't necessarily mean we start offering non-honor classes. It just means we need to support those students more in those classes, in the honor classes, or the classes that they want to take. And they want to, they want to challenge themselves, right? It's about challenging their limits, not limiting their challenges.
Thanks, Roberto. And for additional information on what the current issues already are at Jones with respect to honors versus AP, if you look at the report that I did in a previous item of our activities and accomplishments, there's some links to, like, the equity report that the Equity Committee did in May 2021. And also there's a link to just a bunch of background links that I recently put together for the CPS Office of Equity. And in that set of links, there's also like the Equal Oppurtunities Schools Program that Jones has been doing, which did a survey last year and this year, but I think we don't link up the results from last year. So that talks about some of the differences in enrollment and the factors involved in that. So that is already an issue at Jones that is, you know, an open issue that has not been fully addressed. And so I think that is another, that should be weighed heavily in this discussion as well as the other factors that people brought up. So I think that's kind of all I have. Rachel, do you have any thing additional on that?
My only additional comment would just be the increase in the number of students with IEPs should be something that is a positive change at the school and not a burden, not seen as a burden. So I didn't get that impression when the information was shared with the council that the number of students with IEPs would be increasing, which was just really disappointing, but I hope that moving forward, it's not, not seen that way.
Sarah?
I'd also add that for a school that has a cluster program, I don't think many people know it does have a cluster program. And so I would, I would like to see more representation for that program in discussions. And and as creating this culture and climate to include the cluster program, so maybe that's something Mr. Lopez can work on with the new equity initiatives.
Thanks, Sarah and Rachel. So I think we can move on to 7C. There was an action to take for 7B. It's really informational purposes for the school community. So this 7B is, was brought up during public comment. If people don't have the background on this and didn't hear about it, or didn't get the email from the school and got it and didn't know what it was about. Basically, there was, so I'll go over kind of the background here. The board does have a policy where it was passed last year on addressing bias-based behavior and bullying. This is also in the Student Conduct. This particular policy is part of the Student Conduct. They define bias-based behavior. And for the definition here, and they also define protected categories. And those protected categories include race or ethnicity, ethnic group identification, ancestry, nationality, national origin, immigration status. And, you know, this is a policy that was actually developed and put into place in particular in response to not just at Jones, but especially at other selective enrollment schools as well. In summer of 2020, these Instagram feeds that were mentioned earlier this meeting, like Jones Bi-Pac and other schools have them as well. And CPS wanted to begin to address the scope of these bias-based behaviors and didn't feel that the policies that exist apart were sufficient. And so this policy now exists. And it has very specific steps that are supposed to be taken when there's an allegation of bias-based behavior. And, you know, you do an initial intervention, which includes denouncing that bias-based behavior is unacceptable to the values of Chicago Public School as well as being contrary to board policy. And after you do that intervening to address, then it comes reporting and investigating. And as part of that, school staff should be providing clear communication that reinforces school-wide expectations of a climate that centers belonging, respect, and affirmation of cultural difference. And so that's sort of the background of, you know, bad things happen, discriminatory things happen, racist incidents happen. And the district policy is an attempt to outline what the responsibilities of the adults in, on school staff and school community are in the wake of something like that. And so in this case, seniors received their yearbooks on June 2nd with a post that was discussed earlier. And, you know, denigrating immigrants, particularly Mexican and Central American immigrants. And I think it's very clearly a bias-based behavior incident. Ninth and 11th graders, from what I understand, received their books today with that quote blacked out. And I relieved and happy to see that that step was taken. The response that I had seen as a parent up to that point was an email that we got on June 9th, or you know, some parents got. And I really don't find this sufficient, and I don't think it's in line with what that bias-based behavior policy is supposed, what you're supposed to do. I don't think saying that a quote is inappropriate and was harmful to some people actually is one, it's not true. It's harmful to the entire school community. And that's not denouncing something against the values of CPS. And I think that's that's problematic. And this is not the first bias-based behavior incident that's happened this year where there's been insufficient response by the administration. And last slide, the yearbook review process. The students on the yearbook staff provided some transparency and clarity on this. And I think Alexandra, if she was just to speak to that, could as well. And, you know, there were guidelines and I think it's clear that this post violates some of those. And really, I don't know, but I hope there is an investigation of how did this happen? And it's really concerning that it took place. And that, you know, that harm is done. And, you know, how is, what sort of restorative practices are going to take place as a result? So I don't, if people have other, I think Roberto covered this well, and Mr. Basier covered this well. And, you know, legal and the moral issues here as well as Alexandra in the chat earlier too. So, but if people have other stuff to say, I'm happy to indulge that. But wanted to give an overview of people, you know, weren't clear what happened. Here's the description. And also for people who think this is, you know, the overreach of the school, I think that's something that you need to take up with the Chicago Board of Ed, because this is a clear policy about what bias-based behavior is and how school's supposed to respond to it. And there's also very clear board rules in terms of circulating written and electronic information with board resources. So I think that a link to that is also on one of these slides in the speaker notes. Go ahead, Sarah.
I just, I wanted to add that I think that the response from the administration encourages people to defend the quote as opposed to denouncing as a whole community and coming together. And I think that's why we saw the public comment that we saw today. I mean, I obviously, we're not, we're not all going to be in agreement, but I think that with a stronger leadership, a denouncement, it would have been clearer to all those involved, including sharing the review process. And not just sharing it on Instagram, but sharing it with the whole school community, so.
Yeah, I think that was the student initiative to share that and have a statement about this and in fact, make a statement that quotes made it through this process that they were not in agreement with. And so I, yeah, I commend the students for taking that initiative and being transparent and bringing this issue to light. Go ahead, Lenny.
Thanks, Cassie, for that overview. I was wondering to your point of you hope that there will be an investigation. Can you hear me? How, what can we can do as an LSC to encourage that to happen?
I don't know. I mean, I reported it to the Inspector General in the Office of Student Protections. And OSP is supposed to, when, you know, after a report is filed, supposed to determine whether the school will investigate or whether OSP will investigate, and they've got pretty clear steps in there. So that should happen. And the speed at which this stuff is taking place concerns me, given the amount of harm that's still happening and not being addressed quickly enough. And, you know, to have a senior speaking at our last meeting and saying, you know, she was willing to come and speak to us about harm done and said, but still said very clearly, it is too late and I will not see any justice, and I don't expect to see any justice. And I think that says something about the process that it's very, I have a lot of questions about whether these offices do not have the resources they need or, for whatever reason, are taking far too long to get things addressed. So, I mean, all people can do, I think, is to keep on filing these reports and hope that, you know, it catches someone's attention. I don't know what else, you know, I'm glad that there was also some media coverage of this today. And, you know, this needs to be discussed so that it doesn't happen again in the future and that the harm that's already been done actually, you know, has, there's some, something done about it. So that was a very unhelpful answer, but there you go.
No, I think that was, that was helpful. And it also just, I think it goes back to the point of what Rachel was saying earlier, which was these conversations have to continue. And what Ellen was saying and Ms. Bowman was saying earlier, that all of this, all of these conversations have to continue. These incidents are happening continually every day, but that this happened and it made it to print, what Roberto was saying, that it made it to print is, and that was the only thing that we got from administration was that email is completely unacceptable. I was, I don't know what to say to, you know, those parents who came during public comment to, you know, to debate about what, what the proper response could be. But obviously, we need to continue to talk about it and that the LSC continues to document all the harm that has been caused. I just, I really hope that the next LSC I just, I really hope that the next LSE sees the value in that. Because there was so much great groundwork that has happened. I'm just looking, I'm thinking about just in terms of budgeting. You know, the Budget Committee with Mr. Bernie coming on and how that has changed just the trajectory of transparency at Jones, where, you know, budgets are moral documents. That, that, that is a reflection of progress. So I just wanted to, again, thank you and including Alex and the seniors that graduated, who served the, that you are here and you are contributing to the conversations is so vital and important. So I just wanted to express my gratitude and also my frustration. And also encourage the next LSEs to continue with the committees that you all set forth with the health and safety, the equity and the budget committees, because it's, it's so very important. Thanks.
Thanks, Lenny. Roberto?
Can everyone hear me? Great. So I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier. And I just want to make a point here that another teacher at another LSE, they made this comment about supporting our teachers of color. And his comment was they need not apply to Jones. And it is the theme that keeps reoccurring at Jones for all of our teachers of color and our students of color. We battled to translate the school newsletter, school newsletter into multiple language, in particular, our Spanish, in particular, in Spanish, to serve our Latino communities or Spanish-speaking communities, to support the Jones Black Students with their open letter of what it's like to be, to support the Asian-American Clubs, the Asian-American Club, the American Latin, the Association of Latin American Students. And this is just another, just another spear, another arrow, another dart, another insult to families that look like me. Your heat doesn't belong here. And to la comunidad latina. Juntos. Lo podemos hacer con amor, con paz y con valor en nuestra, en nuestro corazón.
Thank you, Roberto. And so we have one other item tonight and is also really ultimately about equity issues, elevators and accessibility. We have talked about this somewhat before and I don't have something prepared specifically. I think Deborah could give us a good summary of what's happened this year and in the last couple of weeks and the impact of that. So go ahead, Deborah, just putting you on the spot about it.
Sure. No, that's fine. I actually, I made a list. You'll see, I made a list because this is, this is so important. And this is so fundamental. And it is so damaging to students who need the elevator to get around our campus when elevators don't work. And I, I started talking about, you know, we, we know that we have one, one passenger elevator in the North Tower that hasn't worked at all this school year. It's been out of service the entire year. So North is always at a disadvantage. And there is a section of the North Tower that is near the auditorium, the weight room, and some of the classrooms that are at the end of the link that is only handicap accessible if you use the service elevator, which requires that students have a key. They can't just get in, it doesn't work without a key. And on May 18th, that elevator was out of service all day. And it happened to be the day that my student needed to use that elevator to access three classes. Luckily for her, it's one flight of stairs, but it's not safe for her to be on stairs. She had six months this year where she was in intermittent homebound because she was rehabbing from an injury of falling downstairs. So it's a huge problem that's personal to us. So on May 18th, that service elevator was down completely. On May 20th, it was back in service, but the doors were kind of going like this and kind of going like that. And my daughter was concerned she was going to get stuck in the elevator. And a teacher rode the elevator with her that day. And it was the teacher who commented to her, wow, this makes me feel uncomfortable. So we have a maintenance issue that needs to happen with the service elevator in the North Building because those areas of the building, that is the only way. There is no backup, there is no other way. That is the only way that students with any kind of mobility issue can get up there. Now, on May 26th, the functioning, we'll call it functioning in quotation marks, the functioning passenger elevator in the North Tower was out of service for at least half the day. And my student missed a class because she couldn't get to the fourth floor. There was no way for her because one elevator is completely out for the whole school year. The other one wasn't working. And so I reached out to the administration and they told me, yes, we know the elevator is broken. And the engineer called in for a repair. And I said, well, okay, but when students miss classes because they can't physically get there, what's the alternative? Do they get remote learning? What, you know, where do they go if they can't get to their class? No idea, no comment. Then and what I was told is the engineer called the repairs in, the engineer is dealing with this. Then the thing that really, really makes me boiling, and I will be quite honest, I am still boiling about this. On the first day of final exams, my student's second exam was on the sixth floor, the chemistry lab. After my student finished her exam, she went to go down the elevator to come home. And the elevator, the one passenger elevator in the North Tower wasn't working at all. And so my student says, what do I do? And I said, you cannot walk down six flights of stairs because A, it's not safe for you. And B, you have to be ready to take finals again tomorrow. You cannot deal with the physical consequences of coming down the stairs. If there was a fire, she might attempt it. But lacking any kind of fire, we said, no, you're, so she texted me. I called the main office. The main office said, yes, we know the elevator is out of service. And I said, do you understand that my student who has a permanent elevator pass for a reason is stuck on the sixth floor and has no way to leave the building? So they organized an evacuation brigade for my daughter. And I was grateful that Mr. Mitchell came with three security guards. They had to walk up to the sixth floor in the North Tower. And they had to carry her out on one of the evac chairs, which some of them had not done before. So that was a quite an adventure for my student to be carried all the way out of school. And quite an adventure for the security guards who thought this was not a fun way to spend the day, to carry a student down six flights. And so I reached back out to the administration and I said, we need a plan, we really need a plan because this does not work at all. And for you to say, we've, the engineer has notified the service provider is not a plan. You know, whether it's Otis or somebody else, you know, whoever the vendor is for elevator repairs, saying that the engineer called them is not a plan that's sufficient for my family and for other end users, other stakeholders in the functioning of elevators. So Dr. Plunkett is now involved in this because Dr. Powers is on vacation. And so I offered, if they need somebody to come in and help them, ask the right questions to get to an actual plan, I offered to help. She's, my understanding is she's directed our facilities manager, I think that's Troy. I'm not sure, but I think that's Troy, to develop a plan. And so I'm, you know, school's out, my, my student is done. So we have, we have a break for a little bit that we don't, my family doesn't have to worry about elevator service. But I've made it perfectly clear and I've started sharing this with other families whose students require elevators to get around our campus that come August 22nd, if we don't have a plan and if we don't have real maintenance happening on these elevators, it makes our building not accessible. I will start filing OCR complaints and complaints to every other agency that I can think of because this is not equitable access to our building. And, you know, I had people telling me, well, but your daughter got down, it's all fine. I'm sorry, there's a, there's a scoop of trauma that goes with being carried from the sixth floor while your classmates are all around you. This is not fair to students with mobility issues. And it is not a plan to say, well, we called the elevator company. I want to see a chart, a timeline that says, these are the things that have to be repaired and these are when we plan to do it. Because I think that's the minimum that anyone would expect of a facilities manager where we have continued and frequent outages of critical equipment. In a factory, you wouldn't tolerate that. Why would we tolerate that in our school? And that's, I'm sorry, that's my rant for tonight. I track these things, I am not a happy camper. And I will continue to speak up about this because I know there, there are 150, Mr. Mitchell told us at one of our other meetings, there's 150 kids at Jones with elevator passes. Granted, some of them have it for other reasons, like they have asthma or they have other, other problems. But there are plenty of us where our kids cannot get up and down the stairs without the elevator. And being carried out of the building on an evac chair is not a picnic. So we have some serious work to do over the course of the summer. And I will be watching and I will not be on the LSE next year, but I am not going away on this issue. This is near and dear to my heart and we have two more years at Jones and we got to get this right.
Thanks, Deborah. If you'll have additional questions, I put in the chat the link, which I think there is a single company that's responsible for elevator maintenance and repairs at CPS right now as of last fall. So, and it looks like they should be documenting all of their maintenance activities as well as repairs. And so that should be available. Any questions or comments?
Oh, I have one more thing relating to elevators, which is not a physical elevator thing. But since our elevator capacity is constrained because of physical elevator things, students who hop on the elevator without an elevator pass, we've noticed that many staff members, and thank you to our staff members who start asking if they happen to be by an elevator, asking students to show their passes, we very much appreciate that. There's been discussion about whether detentions are appropriate for violating elevator policy and riding without a pass or something else that's, that what other, other kind of consequences would be appropriate. And I think one of the things that I, as a parent, would like to recommend is that we look at loss of lunch privileges two weeks, you know, for off-campus privileges or something like that. That's a really nice perk at our school and kids have to swipe out to get out of the building. Maybe that's a way to incentivize people not to jump on the elevator and take the space from somebody who desperately needs it.
Sarah? Do, do the teachers know of how students can apply for like a temporary elevator pass? Is there like a procedure or maybe Deborah knows that?
Yeah, a temporary elevator pass is a slip of paper you get from the nurse's office. If you have a permanent elevator pass, it is a second badge. It's a completely separate, it fits in your lanyard, just like your Jones badge. It has your picture on it and everything.
Thanks. Okay, so I think that covers those items of new business. We need to do a review of minutes of closed sessions and the records we have of closed sessions. That is one of the possible exceptions to close a meeting. So if people are ready to do that, we can do a motion to go into closed session. We'll go over to a different meet and then return to this one at the end. We could also do a little break, but we could do a break when we get there, actually. So I think, does that make more sense?
No, we can do the break now and do roll call in the closed session. That's, that's fine. We just have five minutes of, in the ether. Okay, so what time is it? Okay.
Okay, so recess till 8:50. Okay, so recess till eight fifty. Okay, so recess till eight fifty.
Okay, so all calls to order at 9:04. Let's go into the roll. Okay, roll. Bowman?
Here.
I think I see Roberto? Okay. Okay, Zen?
Here.
Okay, so we are here. I just wanted to do point of order, which is we forgot to make a motion to go to close. We just want to close at 8:45. So I'm going to retroactively, just for the record, make that motion to go into close.
Second it, as the chair will happen.
And then I'm just going to do the vote for that. Bowman?
Yay.
Cresswell?
Yay.
Kerr?
Yay.
Land?
Yes.
Manah Hapenworth?
Yes.
Ma, yes. Martin Sek?
Yes.
Menjivar?
Yes.
Zen?
Yes.
Okay. And then on review of closed session minutes, I want to make a motion to release the minutes from the following dates. January 19th, 2021, which is a community vacancy discussion. July 8th, 2021, a parent vacancy discussion. October 12th, 2021, parent vacancy discussion. And April 19th, 2022, parent vacancy discussion. All of their closed minutes will remain confidential due, as they deal with personnel issues. And the recordings will be kept because it is earlier than the 18-month review period. Any seconds?
One second.
Is that you, Cassie?
Cresswell.
Okay, sorry. This, though. Bowman?
Yay.
Cresswell?
Yay.
Kerr?
Yay.
Land?
Yes.
Manah Hapenworth?
Yes.
Ma, yes. Martin Sek?
Yes.
Menjivar?
Yes.
Zen?
Yes.
Okay, that is the last item of our new business. I do not believe we have any other public speakers. You have a hand here. Sarah?
I just want to say a few things. One is that, you know, on June 30th, we'll hand over the Google Drive and all of the information to the next LSC. I'm going to reach out to the existing LSC members. They've all been creating new LSC accounts, which is great. But they've been using the Jones College Prep LSC as their recovery address, which from a security standpoint is a terrible idea because they should be using their personal address so they're notified immediately if someone's trying to hack into their account. Additionally, the drive shouldn't be shared. Not every member should have access to it. That would violate OMA. And so I'm going to just, I'm going to put together an email with some just suggestions. Obviously, they can do it however they want to, but that, that I think the chair and the secretary having control of the drive is a safe thing. If they wanted to add a staff member or something, that would be appropriate, too. And I just, I just wanted everyone to know that. And I also want to say thank you, everybody. And that I have a party at my house, so you're all invited.
Thanks, Sarah. I had tried to quote earlier before, and I don't think I got it right. So I'm going to put a little link in the chat for everyone about everything worthwhile being done with other people. And I think that is an appropriate sentiment for the work of the LSC and the work of any LSC. So yes, so I think that is it. Unless anyone has any further comments. Seeing no further business. The last thank you from Rachel. Great. And barring any emergency meetings before June 30th, it has been great to work with you all and have a great summer and stay in touch. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, everyone. Thanks.
Bye.
Bye.